I did some snooping around in OFIC and I found out that there's 33 colleges in the group. Kind of surprised me at the number. On the other side, though, I was surprised. I've already been on 12 campuses during my tenure in the institute. And I've enjoyed being on campus and I thank all the career folks that are here. On the other side, I snooped around too and I was impressed with the range of employer commitment to this group. Usually I do this all over the country and usually I can figure out that the corporate representatives are going to be from financial services and nonprofits and things, but this is a very, very rich group. It cuts across so many economic sectors, which allows the colleges and universities in this group to hear from different perspectives and allows many more pathways for their students to see where they can go. That's really good. So, I'm talking today, I probably got way more than my time allotment, I usually do. Let me tell you what I'm not going to talk about. I'm not going to go in real depth on the labor market today. My report's finished. Universities, public relations says I don't know what they're doing. So I may just release it tomorrow on my own. It's been two weeks and so they're kind of in a confused state up there right now. I will insert some comments about the labor market because it's important to what we're going to discuss. What I am going to do today is I'm going to do a little history about some important things and why we're here. I'm going to talk about disruption. I'm going to focus on the T, the team concept of professional development. And then I'm going to, Bill has asked me to think about some, based on the charge of OFIC on this career transition, what are some ways that I can provoke you to think about some other ways you can contribute? Enough that I can put some things on the table that you can at least talk and then move off from that over the year, but I think there is some really cool things you can do besides the scholarships. It's not the area of career fairs and things like that. I'm not sure that's going to be big bang for the bucks, but it will do help students, there's other ways to help students interface with you. So, having said that, I don't know how much of a national expert I am. I did have to stop down here on the corner of Rich and Fourth at the little psyche shop on the way up here to make sure that everything I was going to say today was legit. So what we're going to do today is we're going to start with a little history. I use Dr. Seuss a lot, among other things, so you're going to hear, there must be a blanked out space up there, so we're going to use Dr. Seuss. So what I'm going to start is I'm going to go back, I have an audience today that can go back in time quite a ways, nothing about our age here, but I'm going to go back, do a little history where things were a lot different and looked a lot greener and were a lot more easier, and then I'm going to work our way forward. First thing is I'm going to talk about the labor market and the transition experience that most students had to go through, and most of these people in this room or in this period, from 1950s to the late 1980s. And it looked like this. I grew up in the Pacific Northwest, going out in my backyard and taking a hike and you come to a gap in the past, and it wasn't very difficult to get across. You just took a big step, going from one place to the other. And you can see in this particular, that where we're going right is relatively flat. So when we transitioned in that period, and I was in that period, you didn't have to have any prior work experience. Certain students did. We had very few internships, we had co-op, we had paid summer employment, but most of us did not necessarily have to work. We had jobs, we didn't have to work. Why? Because most of the training and learning how to work is done by the employers. We would go into those jobs after we graduated, didn't matter if you came from an Ohio State or Whitman, and you used in those positions from five to seven years. Very stable, we took time, figured out who we were. Most of us had a job title, trainee of some sort. Management trainee programs, rotation programs. We estimate that 60% of all new college graduates during this period were in a rotation program. Engineers would be in an engineer one, and those that were liberal arts would find their place by moving from HR to different areas in the organization, and then they'd settle down into a place. And the training and how to work was the responsibility of the organization. During this time, about 65% of the graduates that went into the for-profit sector went to Fortune 500 companies. We've got a mindset built around that. Not that I, nothing wrong with the Fortune 5 companies in this room, but that's what we did. And then you cleared the table with the rest of the education, which was a huge number, and very few that went into government. We counted for about 100%. Okay? So during that time, we built a huge legacy of how we recruit talent, and it involved career fairs, campus, on one-on-one interviewing, and a whole set of systems that we still use today that aren't working well at all. Okay? And actually during that time, there was not huge support services. Career services were very small offices. In fact, up until the early 1980s, faculty did most of it. Your faculty was your academic advisor, your career advisor. And we started adding all these professional services that moved further and further and further away from academics. And then they didn't relate to each other. Now, let's look what happened in the 1990s. We began to change the whole process, the whole process. And now it is an extreme sport to go from college to work. And the thing that's really problematic with this picture is it is not moving because the right side, as you look at it, the employer side for the group in here, is moving away from the colleges at an ever-accelerating rate. An ever-accelerating rate. And the dynamics over there are changing. So when a student leaves the university and ends up trying to get onto a job, it's like landing on shale, sliding all over the place. What we expect of them has gone up, and what really should be in this picture is the side, the right side should be higher than the left side. Not only do they have to jump across the campus, they have much higher expectations than have ever held for new college grads before. So we changed the dynamics, and it's very, very hard. But the problem is on the university side, we haven't changed quite as fast enough, we think we have, we haven't changed quite as fast enough, and we're trying to get this gap closer together. And we're winning some places, we're not in others, but there's still a lot of tension on the employer side. They're under pressure every single day to change. They're under, these people in the room will sit down and tell you, they're under siege every single day. They're competition, they've got to change, they have to adapt. And they can't wait for the universities and colleges to adapt. Okay? So, what happened out of this is some bad things, or some things. It shifted higher education on more than just education. It started to include a whole set of skills, competencies, and abilities that were not necessarily built into the curriculum or the mindset of the institution. If you want me to switch, just leave that one. Okay? I'm sorry about, I'm not sure about the mic. Okay? And so we get this, and then, but the big thing is, the preparation from the workforce shifted out of the companies back to higher education. You had to get them ready to work for us. We don't have time for that anymore. Because one of the outcomes of this 1990s was we did away with training and development. I didn't spend all the time on my list up there. The other big thing that happened and is often done, think about, is we shifted who hires new college graduates. Today, 60% of all college graduates going into the for-profit sector work for companies under 500 employees. And that, we rely on the big fortune to come to campus and give us brand recognition, but that's, and yes, you're hiring, but you're not hiring in the big consistent numbers that the small companies is. And there's lots of them out there, and that's very different to work with. But I, so what happens is, another trigger, and this is the one that these colleges and universities in this room and presidents have to deal with any, we shift, we're shifting from the idea that education is a common good, it's good for all of us to get educated, to it's a commodity and it's something that leads to a job. And so what we've got, we've got a different set of expectations externally on us that we have to prepare for a job, and rather than this idea of a common good and that we're going to build an electoral fabric of the nation and so that when we do more than just a job. Okay? And as a result, since the night of this, disruptions have become more problematic for the new college labor market. Prior to 1990, the recession in 1992, most, during most business down cycles, most employers just kept right on hiring. And they just kind of stockpiled new graduates, they would bounce right back. Beginning in 1992, in the recession of 92, 2000, and 2008, the major focus, people that got hurt were college graduates. It took longer and longer for the markets to rebound in the college labor market, and it gets longer and longer every time we have a business down cycle. There's different reasons for those different cycles, and those three different things, but it's taken much, much longer. And so most of my discussion today is going to be on disruptions, and they're not going to come from business cycles. Now, this is a terrible slide because it's all red, but one of the things that is really probably, most employers in this organization is going to talk about the range of skills and competencies that we need beyond what is generated in what we call the disciplinary major, or where students are sitting. Now, if you look at this, this list of skills and competencies was developed in 1991. It's the SCANS report, some of you may remember this, it's the Secretary's Commission on Acquired Necessary Skills. If you look at the skill sets that were recommended at that time, they're exactly the same ones that every employer is concerned about today. We've added some, or redefined some of these into more, and I usually work with 22 skills and competencies. But if you look up there, and you look, and guess what? Back in 1991, we said system thinking was really critically important for every graduate in the labor market. Didn't touch it. I mean, universities didn't touch it. About having not only the basic skills, but resource, you know, you see everything up there is exactly today. And what happens is, as we introduce new technologies or do things, the skill sets stay exactly the same. You can think of it as a big blob. And sometimes we stretch out certain skills and we emphasize those, and then we change how we do business or we try a technology, and those kind of don't disappear, they stay there, they just go back in the blob, and you pull out new ones. And we're always stretching these skills and competencies as we change out, but everybody has to be basically competent in the blob and have those skill sets so they can call on them at any time. And it's interesting, we're almost 30 years into this and we're still haven't got our handle on these skills and competencies yet. One, they don't all come from education, they don't, but they do come from learning, which is different from education, by the way. And so we're still dealing with this problem. Okay? Now, it brings us up to 2008, when the bottom dropped out for all of us. And colleges have gotten hit particularly hard here for a number of reasons. This, the whole cost of college manifested itself, the huge student loans, and the need to get jobs to pay those loans off, and there was a big push outside of higher ed to look at what was the responsibility of higher ed to produce students that were qualified for work. Now, we're sitting here at 2018, 19, well beyond 2008. We've had nine years, including this one, of consistently robust college labor markets. Usually that covers up for a lot of sins, and we can move on and we don't think about this stuff. But it hasn't gone away at all. This labor market for this year that the graduates will face is very, very good. It isn't double digits, thank goodness, it's down to, growing at about 8%, down from 20% for the last four years. You can't sustain those levels. But everybody's pretty much hiring across the board. There are some weak spots. Manufacturing's off, we should expect that, there's some issues in manufacturing. My home state is the auto industry is weakened a bit. And, but most of the other sectors are up slightly, or depending on which ones they are, very strongly. So we see a good labor market. However, the argument about producing students that are workforce-ready hasn't ebbed one bit. The pressures are on colleges to keep producing, and we'll come back to this later, graduates that get through quickly, cheaply, and are ready to work. That goes against a lot of what most of us think higher ed's for, and we'll come back to that. Okay? There's another thing going on here. We have a huge supply-side problem. We're not, there's not enough supply to handle the demand. The BA, those with BAs and above, that labor market unemployment's under 2%. There's just not enough out there. But here's the catch. If the student that's expecting to graduate this year does not have the competencies and the abilities and the experience that any of the employers in this room wants, they're not going to hire them. This is not the dot-com period of 1990, you know, late 1995 through 2000, when it got, we went off crazy, and anybody that could breathe or had a heartbeat was hired. Employers are much more diligent now, they're looking at people, and if they're not ready for work, they're willing to pass on them, hold the position open, and defer it till later. They just don't want to take the risk of hiring somebody that they'd have to invest in heavily just to train them up for ready-to-work. Now that's not every organization that's in this room, but there will, people will agree to that. And I said, there's huge pressures about students being able to cover loans. It's a, you know, there was this report that came out about three weeks ago, that said if the federal government would just forgive all the 70%, they, federal government makes up 70% of the loans, if they forgave those loans, this, they showed that the growth in the economy would be huge, because that money could be diverted to homes and other things that these young people are deferring from. I'm not sure that would happen, but it might be a pretty smart thing to do. Okay? And disruption is constant. So what am we going to talk about disruption? So this is a game of Go, some of you may be familiar with it, it's a very hard game, this is kind of a little old story now, but when, you know, we, cognitive computers have won chess and they've won Jeopardy and all that. And the challenge was to develop a cognitive computer that could beat the game of Go, which is very, very difficult. And the projections were they wouldn't be able to do it to 2025, actually two years, actually it was fall two years ago, that they actually, a computer won the game of Go. And that was amazing in itself, but what it did is it self-taught itself the game of Go as it played, and began to use moves that nobody had ever seen before, because it self-taught itself so fast to play the game of Go. And that's what a technology's doing. Technology is changing very, very rapidly and it's changing the way we do things. And what happens is, it's, technology's going to change fast and it's going to be constant. Okay? And it's going to affect every single job there is. In fact, I work a lot with IBM, and IBM's cognitive division and their AI division has a goal to augment every single occupation out there. Now their job is not to replace it, but to augment it. That means technology to assist us in doing our jobs. Okay? But one, it doesn't matter if technology's going to replace a human or it's going to augment what we do. Three things happen. Three things happen. One, you can pull out that particular job and a human will never do it again. You pull out and upgrade skills, and it takes more skills to do what machine is not doing or the software's not doing. Or you pull them skills down and you need lower-trained people to operate whatever's left. That's the three things that happen, well documented in technology and jobs. So what we have to do is think about all the jobs that are going to be impacted. And you look at, on the right-hand side, this comes out of a book called The Future of the Professions. These guys came out of law and looked at what happened in law, and then they applied that to all these other professions. And there's a lot of professions on that list that are mostly college-educated positions. And every one of them's going to be affected. Not too long ago, we lost, because of new, very sophisticated software in law, lost 40% of law jobs. Those jobs are never, ever, ever coming back. And they're still whittling away at some areas of law, particularly contracts, patent law, and so they'll be whittling down. But that's going to affect others. There's others in sight, accountants and things like that, that I'll talk about in a minute. What I want to bring to the attention is this quote from Dave Mendel at MIT, who does a lot of robotics and AIT, and this is what you have to understand. You change the technology and you change the tasks. And once you change the task, you change the type of person that can do the job. So you have to have somebody that's either trained themselves to do it different, or you're going to have to bring in a different kind of person. And you start changing the number of, the kinds of people, you change the organization. And you begin to change the organization and then the systems in which you work begin to change. So the consequences of this, these new technologies, and they're going to come very, very fast. Very, very fast. It's not just that it's going to affect my job, it's going to affect who I work with, how we work, who we're aligned with, and it's going to take people that can adapt to that, can adapt to that. And I'm going to just take a few minutes to spend on some examples. Let's go to the effective software that's coming around. Very sophisticated now, thanks to neuroscience and what we know, and building computers that can recognize eye movement and voice. Now we all get a chuckle out about what the Japanese have done with companion robotics and sexual partners. But what happened now is they've taken that in Japan, and it's going to be in the US, and they're looking at elderly companions. They have no one to care for, they're elderly in Japan, so they've turned to robotics and as a way to provide companionship and care to their elderly population. Now, my mom died a year ago at 99, and she was a blessed life. The last four years or so were miserable because she had memory loss and she couldn't get around and things like that. I live far away, so I didn't take the brunt of this, but my brother did, and I know it was frustrating for him, and when I would go visit, it would be very hard to sit with her because of short-term, I mean, you'd sit an hour and you'd hear the same story over. She'd forget to go out and do her walking, and even when she was finally put in a nursing home, she'd just sit there. And I would think, boy, I'd be blessed to rent a robotic companion that could sit with her and have, understand a conversation where, and would not get frustrated after an hour of hearing, you know, when are you going to go home, when are you going to go home, how long are you going to stay? And we'd get her up and say, Mary, you've got to exercise now, let's walk down the hall. And Mary, we're going to eat now. And actually help her eat, because she would forget, she would just get distracted. But this is also turning into trusted counselors. We're seeing the same software being used that can do basic intake in counseling situations, whether it's in situations where students feel under stress and they can quickly, with what they know, get those students in the right pathways to the right professionals. In our area, career services, you're going to, you can see it coming. We can have it open 24-hour, 7, basic companion, trusted advisor, they see a face, but they, it may not be a real person, but that companion's talking to them, they can lead them down. Number of question pathways, kind of come to some decisions about where they should be and direct them to a professional in the career office, but if that may not be the issue, they could send them somewhere else. Okay? We're going to see a lot of that. Right now, there's some, I don't know, I'm going to pick on J.P. Morgan and people, but we just had an experiment last summer with very sophisticated cognitive software that outperformed regular people in investment. And so there's big changes coming, and depending on how you're going to look at that. So we have to have some way, this is my whole point, we have to have some way of preparing young people for disruptions. That first job is critical, but man, it's water, that first job doesn't last very long, you've got to be ready quite quickly through your third decade O-H, which is a twenties into your thirties. So we're going to talk about the T. And this is a T, it goes, has its antecedents back to the early 1990s. It came out of England in a conversation at one of the big first, big computer gigs over there, and somebody, I can't remember the gentleman's name, mentioned that we're going to need T people that have depth in the knowledge, but can cross multiple boundaries. Because that's what, he was specifically talking about computers, IT people. And the conversation went on for a while, and some people reacted to that, and then it just died down until IDEO, which is a big design firm in the Bay Area, and brought it to the US and became advocates for this. And it's caught on in a number of places, particularly in the companies in Silicon Valley. IBM was a big advocate of that, along with their Smart Planet, they're very T-shaped. They were the ones that brought me in to work with them, and I've been working with them for about 10 years on this. And what happens is, it's pretty much a conversation that goes on, some people don't use the word T, but it's about depth and breadth. The people at IDEO run the design school at Stanford, which is very, very famous, and they're doing most of the work, these people are, have faculty that are doing all kinds of things. Probably the best career book is Design Your Life right now, and it's written by people who are never trained in career development. They use design theory and this T concept, and they built probably the most reliable book that any of us can use for designing your life. So, what do we have here? I'm going to describe this. We personally believe, my colleagues that have worked on this, that this is a metaphor that can be used as a connector to bring the components of university together. Nothing up here is original or unique. All these parts exist, they just aren't put together the right way or in any way at all. To produce a young, innovative adapter that can not only get that first job, but can sustain themselves as your organizations change. And it requires depth, and it requires breadth, and it requires a very important component called the me. Okay? So depth is, there's two parts to depth. One is the, if you've maybe glanced at the brief, I think we sent out a brief, did you, did I send the brief or to you guys, or the monograph? No, I didn't? Okay. There is a short monograph that I'll give you, I'll send to Bill, and he can send to everybody, and it's going to be in a book coming out from a business press later. But this is depth of disciplinary knowledge. This is the ability to know a discipline, know the effective motor, what we call psychomotor, this is ability to work in labs or whatever your tools are that we trade, and the effective component to be able to deal with others. And so this is buried in the discipline. This is what we're really, really good at, at the university and colleges and universities. The other depth part is deep systems understanding. Now, IBM added this to the T when they got a hold of it. What goes back to those, that SCANS report, 1991, that we needed systems thinking in here, and what brought this to And what brought this, uh, to, uh, their attention was the fact that when they sent people out to deal with a problem, which that's IBM's business, they would send out and solve that problem, and then it would just move somewhere else in the system. And then they'd be back working on it again. The whole point is to get rid of the problem completely, and you can't do it without system thinking. And so we've spent a lot of time developing this part. This part's going to be one of the two parts that are really, really hard to build in a systems approach to learning in colleges and universities that can then be taken and adapted when you get into organizations. But this is somebody that has innovative, they're open, they're flexible, and they're self-learning. Self-learning is critical. Okay, now, this doesn't make a lot of sense, because if I went around this room to every president or representative from a college/university, they would give me a definition of system thinking from their discipline. And believe me, there's probably three hundred disciplines out there, we've probably got three hundred definitions. But we had to make this real. And how IBM makes this real is their Smart Planet initiative. And what they did was, they looked at the systems that they dealt with problems, and they identified thirteen, thirteen systems that you and I interact with every single day. And some of them are systems of flow and things, so the transportation and supply chain, water, food, energy. Some of them are systems of human activity, building, construction, finance, retail and hospitality, healthcare, education, and then there's some, they have three levels of government, all of them doing different, supposedly do, supposed to do different, uh, levels of responsibility. So that they want their employees to think is, become invested in one of these systems. Learn the health system, and it's up and down and sideways. So you know what, if we're going to do, work, enter here, how that might be played out, what's going on up the system and down the system. Okay? Now, what happened at IBM, prior to becoming T, they were almost, and you universally think of IBM as engineers and computer science geeks, a lot of instant scientists, right? Well, today, thirty-five to forty percent of their workforce is made up of humanists. They cannot go in a system without psychologists, sociologists, and others. Some of their leading scholars are now sociologists, Microsoft has them, Intel has them. Because you can't solve a problem without having a diverse team of people on a problem. So that brings us to one of the first breadth skills, and that's interdisciplinary conversations. Now, on the university, we try to, colleges, we do this as double majoring, and, and we try to do this in a number of different ways. But what we really want here is to sit people from disciplines down and work together where they take the time to understand the different perspectives that they bring. Historians and economists getting together is a disaster, because we don't look at data the same way, and we don't authenticate it the same way, and we don't make the same kind of assumptions. So it's very hard for historians and economists to sit at the table. But we have to. And the same way, it's hard for biologists and economists. So we have to have a conversation. So I spent some years overseas, in Thailand, as head of economic analyst for all their land reform projects. And fortunately, this is where my liberal arts background in chemistry paid off. Uh, and I had gone on into life sciences and started my masters before I actually just say that I was drafted and went to Vietnam, and it changed. I went, instead of coming home a chemist, I really wanted to do international development. So that's what changed. But I was able to do the same program, I had a scholarship from Michigan State, and I just morphed off of that. But I went to Thailand, and I was the chief economist. But I had to be able to work with a, a young man from Sweden, who was a water specialist and irrigation specialist, a gentleman from Israel that was a crop specialist, particularly in saline crops, and third, a German who was there to manage the community development infrastructure that had to go with the changes we made. I could not make any economic projections unless I understood and had conversations with them and understood what they had. Fortunately, my education at Whitman, not my PhD education, my Whitman, Whitman allowed me to have those conversations. You have to be able to say, this is hard. We just take it, if we get a few classes in another discipline, we're all right. The next one is breadth one, is the big one, it's the boundary-spanning skills. This encompasses more than you think. Uh, this is a skill that, critical thinking is a boundary-spanning skill, it is not a depth skill. That's problem-solving. Uh, teamwork, project management, cultural awareness. It's all the things that allow you to be able to cross functional boundaries, organizational boundaries, nation-state boundaries, cultural boundaries, because it's all going to be involved every day in the work you do. I don't think there's an employer in the room that would not agree to that. Every day, they have to cross multiple boundaries in everything they do. So it becomes, this is where we need all these broad, we call them people skills, I don't like that word, because it's more than just people skills. Heavenly, that's why we call them boundary-spanning skills, and there's a nice literature around that. Okay, that brings us back to the one that's called the me. This is critical. And the me, unlike Ts, we go back and look at Is, and we produce mostly Is in college, which are just disciplinary knowledge. When you, an I, and a lot of our faculty Is, your job is to push the boundary of the field. It's more introspective than introspective. But if you're going to be a T, you have to know a lot about yourself. You have to be confident in yourself, you're going to cross all those boundaries. You're going to be adapting to change constantly. So we have to have somebody that me means something, and we've broken it down to purpose, confidence, and awareness. Now, for the college side and the university side, this is cool, because if you look at student success and you'd look at academic student success literature, research literature, it comes down to purpose, confidence, and awareness. If you look at career development and professional development literature, you come down, guess what? Bottom line is purpose, confidence, and awareness. They're the same platform. There should be no distance between professional development and academic, because we're working in the same thing, and they're intertwined. But we need to have purpose, confidence, and awareness, per, all dry, and so we have these grams, and you can have these slides, you don't have to write this all out, and you can certainly, I'll, I'll get the monograph out and explains it. But confidence, awareness, learning from others, being able to interact with others, adapt, understand differences. With purpose and awareness, you understand differences, you mobilize resources, purpose and confidence, you can make plans. Okay. So we look at awareness, it's, I know my purpose is, and I'm going to talk about purpose as diff, it's going to be different from passion here, uh, and it's, and it's beyond pa, but it's being aware of who we are, aware of the others around us, and how they can help us, what resources are available to us, and when do I need to draw on those resources? This is going to be a real mindset change for students. Confidence is getting out and trying things, getting beyond your zone. My colleagues at IBM, when we go out and talk, they want to talk about failure. They want people that have failed and tried things. I said, you don't want to talk about that on college campuses, because when they talk about failure, that means that they're going to go out the door. We don't want students to fail. What we want them to do is experiment and try things that are outside their comfort zone, that they can have challenges that won't lead them to fail out of college, but they, if they don't work out, it's a way that they can take those experiments and figure out how to do it different, how to recover from that. Because that's what IBM's really looking for, that's what Intel's really looking for, that's what all these people are really, have you tried something? You've run your head into the, into the wall, and it didn't work. How did you come back and figure it out and get it, and, and come to a new, a different way to do it? What different resources do you, who did you call in, different people to look at their input? Did you look at the input from some of the people on the team that you dismissed early on? Is that going to help you make it, get around that obstacle? So it's very, very important. And then we get to purpose. We want kids that are passionate about the work, number one thing, I want kids that are interested in passion work. And yes, we want passion, but passion often comes without a direction. So purpose is the place where you have a plan. Now, this isn't a plan that most students get, where I'm going to get a job at X place. This is a kind of a sense, where do I want to make a difference? And I know that my, and I, I can make a plan to get there, but it may be some multiple intermediary steps. It may be different, but they have some sense, because if you have a purpose, guess what? You do better academically. You retain, and you get to your degree faster, all proven in the literature. Okay, so purpose, big, big things there. Okay, this is just one diagram, you can't read these things. It's basically my way of, when I'm working with academics, to talk about how we have to change, how we assess. Okay? And how we, we get students prepared to transition. We ask them different questions. It's not enough time to do that, so skip. Okay, if you're going to do this, if you're going to do this, you have to be intentional on the college side, you've got to be intentional. Okay? That means not somebody else is going to do it, you have to assume everybody's going to do it. And I've been on more small college campuses, on student panels, and asking them questions, and the faculty just gets stunned that the students don't see the connections. And the faculty says, well, didn't you see that? No, because they weren't intentional, the faculty was not intentional about making those connections. You have to be innovative. You have to think of new ways to create learning environments, not education environments, learning environments. And learning activities that extend the boundaries of the university, and I'm going to talk about this group in a few minutes of how they do that. And it has to be integrative. You can't wait to the senior year to integrate it. It's constant integration from day one, it's about being able to prepare to tell your story. And storytelling is key now everywhere. You just don't give a resume to one of your employers and it says, dude, I want to know what your story is. What's your story? What ma, what, in, you know, a couple of sentences, what makes you excited about why you went to Franklin University, or Wittenberg, or Baldwin Wallace, or what, who are you? And they don't know how to do that. So, the T is a connector. We take it out of the metaphor and we connect it. We're seeing it on campuses in a number of places. It's a connector. And the most critical components are how we're going to bring in systems thinking and the me. So think of it as a connector to bring the different pieces together. Now, it's also the connector to the employer side. This is not just one side, we're going to start it on the college/university side, but it's, the pipeline issue is huge here. Because somebody has to make those Ts real. They, as undergraduates, these young people have to have experiences and learning in situations that are outside the classroom. And a lot of those have to take place in your organizations. So you have to apply to platform. Some of it can be done in internships, we'll talk about some other ways in a minute. So that, it's all about context. A T thrives in their ability to adapt to context. It takes a lot of practice. You got to get out there, and you got, some contexts don't work, you have to figure out how I'm going to adjust to that. Others are easier. So if you stay in the classroom and on the boundaries of campus and only get off a little bit, not going to be helpful here. We really have to think about learning environments that embody different ways to do it. I would show you how IBM thinks about it, I don't have time, but I'll come, we can ask some questions. So we have opportunities. Uh, University of Tampa is using this concept into their program to change the entire mindset of campus. So they call it Spartan Ready. And it's bought, and just, they're going to change the mindset of students as it goes along, they've got faculty buy-in, and they got high administration. President believes it, that this is the way to go, and so you have a, somebody at the top that anchors this. Okay, there's different ways now, as Bill said, look for some ways to do this. Now, you have, if this organization has, needs to continue these scholarships, there's other things you can do. We're seeing that challenges work really well here. We can keep them on campus, or we can move them into your environment. Just throw this out. So for example, we have Apple on our campus, Apple Challenges, and they, we have a big lab that the kids come and work in. Now, guess what? Eighty percent of the kids in these, that are on the teams in these challenges are liberal arts students, they're not engineers, and they're not IT folks. They're learning the code as they go along, they're learning principles of IT as they go along to address the challenge, but they're made up mostly, and they love it. It was set to start this year for only the semester, and they, the students themselves are not getting credit for this. There's no, you know, big bonus, they can get it on their co-curricular record, but they've asked to extend it now that they can have a full, one semester is not enough, they've been given a full year under the Team Challenge. And you can send these up, there's different ones, IBM does these. You can set these up on campus. You can, on the campus side, you can begin to bring your faculty together, in the systems way, to teach around big global issues. So climate change, whether, you know, wherever you are, it's really, the thing that's killing us out there is the fact that you get mounds and mounds of scientific data, and the scientists don't explain it to the common people very well, and so it's easy to diss it. But we have photographers out there, we have singers out there, we have all kinds of humanists that have taken that and defined that in different ways. We need instead now to have to bring all those people together and talk about it from different approaches, and find a way to talk about some of these bigger issues to people that don't understand scientific data. And there are ways to do it. Okay, another one is the entrepreneurship that's going on in campuses that are challenges. I imagine some of you, if not all of you, have tried this. Hasn't, this is not a concept for building out, a lot of people to start their own companies, if you get a few of those, great. What these, mostly these employers said, we want some people that have this creative, innovative mindset that can come in, and as we have problems, can attack them. If you're just an I, you're not going to attack problems creatively very easy, I hate to tell you that. But now, your creative people are coming from different disciplines in different ways. That's why I think the STEM movement is going to lose a little bit of steam, it's not bad, but we're going to have to, that's a good way to say that, because we're going to go to STEAM, which is put the arts back in it. We've got to put the arts and creative people back in it. Now, if you're on the employer side, and this is something that you guys can think about, what happens if you sponsor some of these challenges? What if you have a grand challenge, OFIC Grand Challenge, where you have different teams on each campus, put together, and they have to compete against each other, but they have to be interdisciplinary teams, they have to be inter, you know, cross-cultural teams? So they have to work together, and then they have, and then they make a presentation, you pick a winner. Maybe they get a prize at the end, and you do that. There's other things you can do. You can begin to think about team internships, not just individuals, you bring in teams, they're trying this, some people, IBM is one, is trying this, this is where I've, but they're, they're bringing in, you come to campus, and I noticed that you're, you're in regions, so you have employers around each of your campuses. So one of them goes to the schools and says, either one campus or all, we're going to bring in a team, we want a team of four to five people, uh, as a team internship, and we're going to bring them into our organization to work with our team on a problem, but we want people from distant disciplines. So you can, think of taking the traditional internship and making it more to advantage so you impact more students, but you also do some stuff. It's going to take some work to get there. And I would also say, if you're going to do team internships, that you force faculty, well, you don't force, you can't force faculty to do anything, but you, you encourage, incentivize faculty to be part of that, so they can understand what's going on, so they can see it. Okay? You can also build, I said, team challenges from the employer side that are not just on campus, but you can take them off-campus. So these are some of the ways you can extend that value proposition with the resources you have to stimulate, uh, young people to get, obtain the skills and the context, and have your professionals interact with them as they're in these challenges. So when you go back to the team challenge concept, maybe you assign one professional mentor to the, each of the teams, so they have a professional that can work with them. Now, there's some things I left off here, one of the most important things is mentoring. We forget mentoring, I started out doing a lot of research in mentoring, then it kind of went away, now it's back, we know that huge mentoring. This is not the supervisor, this is a mentor. And as I said at lunch to the people that were sitting with me, is one of the reasons I sent my daughters to liberal arts schools and not Michigan State, was I was willing to pay for that, because I knew they would never get a mentor at Michigan State, it is too large. Fifty thousand. It is two arts, 50,000 undergraduates. There's not enough faculty to mentor them. But every mine went to small school and they all had a mentor. They still their mentors today. And likewise, when you go in the workplace, you have a mentor. And what happens is you can, we can mentor more using professionals in these organizations that are committed to YFC is to do some mentoring of students. Big payoff here. Having, you know, I would say that instead of the big career fairs, which are not gonna go away by the way, but we're finding informal situations, no ties, no resumes. You bring professionals and you bring students and just let them talk. First place, on the employer side, you're gonna identify much quicker the kind of people you want in your organization. And you can, but then these young people get comfortable talking to adults other than their parents. They get comfortable talking off their social media devices. And they'll open up. The minute you put coats and ties on them, have to turn in a formal resume, the whole game changes. We're finding out huge gains from just having informal get-togethers. So you can have some regional, and it could be by industry. It could be cross-industry. There's some ways you can put on, where you bring kids together and talk about what it means to be a professional. Introduce yourself, tell about what your company does and feed them. Feed them does a lot. Okay, so looking ahead, we're still in this thing about ticket to jo- uh, the, ticket to a job has to be fast and cheap. Politicians aren't gonna leave this. Parents aren't gonna leave this. It leaves us in a dilemma that I deal with every single day is, how do we balance, particularly at independent colleges and universities, the need for the long-term investment we're gonna make in you that you have to see beyond getting that first job and making me get the first job, okay? We're really trapped with that first destination survey that everybody wants that first job and we're held to accountable for that. It's the worst measure in the world. Back when it started in the 1960s, it was perfect because those people were gonna be in the job market five to seven years. You were in the labor market. It was a good measure. Now it has, says nothing about how established, even for engineers. They're, they just move around too. We're gonna still be slashed at in a thousand different ways by opportunities to, you know, come up with different ways to deliver higher education. So you're gonna have to be able to respond to that and it's gonna sting. Second thing is the demographics are changing. It's our Achilles' heel. It doesn't matter where you are, the demographics are changing. Numbers are gonna be smaller. A lot of us, and now it gets to branding and you've talked about this branding of who we are. Not only who we are as an institution, but how, who we are as a group of institutions that can articulate a set of values that transcend all of us. So you can do those kind of things of directing the right kind of students to the organizations. But you have to, but now out of the T, I think you can develop a more vibrant brand. We're, we're struggling at Michigan State. I don't know how far to go. But the smaller schools that have taken this on are doing much better here. A T is a connector. It's more than a metaphor. You have to make it work. Okay, I will say this. So I'm gonna conclude here because I'm running out of time. So I'll go back to the Lorax. So if you're familiar with the Lorax, this is what Lorax says. "They love being here." All our students love being on campus. "It's the greatest time of their life and, but they, I can't let them stay. They'll have to find food and I hope that they may." And that's the big Michigan State thing. "God, we get them out, get them a job, they're fed." And they not last very long. But they're not worried about that. But I think our responsibility is to be sure that they're fed much longer than this. So unless students are ready, unless students have confident understanding of self, have a mastery of learning, how do they learn? How do I learn every single day? Unfortunately, the four years that they're putting in at your institutions, okay, some of them may stay a little longer, is an investment and a down payment. It doesn't end. They've gotta come out learners rather than just educated so they can learn non-stop the day they go over to hear JP Morgan. Because boy, if they stop learning JP Morgan, you're not gonna be there very long, right? Okay, or Citibank, or any of the organizations that are represented here. They have to have professional learning experience. They've got to get out in different contexts. It doesn't matter if they wanna be in social services and social work. I mean, they do put their people out, but you've got to get out there. My nur- my daughter went back into nursing and she's just really, well, she's concerned and she's, but she's amazed at how many nursing students get so far and then they go out and they're so, they've never been in a, in a nursing situation in a clinical. And how many of them flunked out in clinicals because they just can't adapt to the context? Hard, hard. And they have to influently tell your story. I stepped the last slide just a little too fast, but storytelling is critical and that, and this is an important part of the T. So how do we craft what we do? Okay, then this is my message to everybody sitting in this room. Unless someone like you cares a whole heck of a lot, nothing's gonna get better. It's just not. So that's our responsibility. So I'm gonna entertain questions for a few minutes. I don't know what your schedule is. Am I good? Because I lose track of time even though I've got one back there. But if there are questions, I'd be glad to handle a few questions. Yes, ma'am?
So it's, what you're talking about and having career people encourage the students to be fluent, to be able to tell their stories. All these things we all know. Our difficulty is the gap between engagement and getting them to work and all these things because the students aren't working, they're going to school. Sometimes they're student athletes. And all these opportunities, the ones that Bill talked about and Karen's talked about, it's not unusual for us here. I just don't have time.
Okay, that's right. So what's happened is, and here are some of my colleagues and my people I, you know, I, in the, we got separated and then now there are service over there that you go and, students go to when they have the time to go there. Usually it's too late. My thing is we should do away with career services in a way, not do away with the people. Just do away with, because it's too remote and place them right in academic services. Because when students have conversations, there's moments to have them. But they're usually not anywhere near career services to have them. Now, when I, back in 2000, when I reorganized career services, I was called on to record. I, I did. I moved everybody out of career service, moved them into the colleges. Not decentralized, but moved them to colleges and it worked. And they're overloaded and it, it works partially, but still, we get them down in the colleges and they still can't capture most of those students. So we have to do, what we have to do in career services is become the coaches and facilitators to train everybody else on Canada to be career agents. And then we have to invest our time in being the integrator, whether we have the co-curricular record or what, and be the storytellers of how to tell your story. Forget about trying to place kids that have career fairs and resumes. All that can be done online. There's gonna be million ways to connect employers. Uh, they're coming, the platforms are coming if they're not already here. You're gonna have these different kind of hosting events where you're preparing students to tell your story. The question is, how are we gonna change the student mindset to know that this is equally important? So one thing we have to do is make sure the faculty understand that there is now professional development, not career services, which is writing a resume and finding a job. But professional development, which is now the responsibility of those professionals who are in that office, is intertwined and essential to the promotion of the academic intellectual curiosity that the faculty want. And they have to go together. And the faculty have to understand that. At least you better have some agents. And President's gotta get some agents on the faculty side to do this. And you bring these together and they work together. So these things aren't separated out and, and that professional development is just, or is an afterthought. Because if you go to most faculty, they'll think, oh, that's where they get. You just go get a job, just go to career service. Talk to most students, oh, that's where I tend to write my resume. No, we don't do that anymore. We don't have to do that anymore. I can put all that up on training exercises on the, uh, modules on the web. I can do that. But I can't be a coach where I'm sitting if you're separated in space from academics. I can't be a facilitator of, and help plan events that bring these different contexts together. I can't be the prime agent to do the storytelling assessment, the narrative part. Because you have to sit down, so you have to build that in. You have to be consciously aware of building this in. If it keeps going the same way, you're not gonna make things better. You're, so you're absolutely right. Now you got me preaching and pretty good at that, but other questions? Right over here, yes?
Yeah, Mark, it seemed to me that you came at analytic and came and problem solved many times in different ways.
Yep.
And it seems to me that you suggested that some form of learning agility is quite a tool that allows that to happen.
Yep.
Therefore, but I don't understand yet what your view is on how to build learning agility with the college education.
Okay, well, some of it, some of it's a challenge because mentally they aren't developed to handle all the agility that you need. If you're, I'm assuming you're on employer side. Are you? Okay, you work for, some of it's, but it's, 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 it's the qualitative literacy, the day, the analytics of information and, and handling information and things have to be embedded in multiple different ways. And they have to be asked to take it out of the classroom and just practice it. And give them, that's why you use the challenges. Try to break ways where they have to use those things to see how they do. And you can bring them back and say, well, what happened? Unless you're crafting learning situations that do that, you won't move that needle very much. But it's all about, and that's what we're doing. Most of my work now is with my colleague, who's the Senior Associate Provost for Learning and Innovation. And we're looking at just, how do we create learning spaces and learning contexts in multiple different ways that allow students to take content education into different venues and, and be tested, you know, challenged to use that and see what happens? I don't know, I mean, that's the place I'd have to start. Do I have a definitive answer? I'm probably not there yet, but you're answering questions we're wrestling with every day. I don't think that's unique. But I think we just have to start somewhere. What we're starting with, we're bringing these challenges. We're creating hubs where students can come in and we try to, everybody, you know, the, the BASTASX story is, is Stanford where they built the design lab. Uh, and it's not catered to any major. Any student come there and they put up problems that they wanna work and they have faculty. And they, students gravitate those problems. So Boise State's done that. It's been a big win where you remove the barriers to what major you're in and you get faculty to, and you, and you, and they, challenges and they go out and work on them. And some of them is building an app to do this and some of them do that. But, but the thing about Stanford, so when I, when I was looking to go to college, my, I had my choices and one of them was Stanford. And you went down there, we were just at that time, just all I's. So you got a discipline and they make the best chemist or whatever you wanna do. Happened to stay closer to home to Whitman for a variety of reasons. But today, the mindset of Stanford students has completely changed. You go out there and it's about, we're gonna be innovative and creative. We're gonna push the boundaries of disciplines. There's still few that'll go on, but they're, I'm not gonna start a company? How am I gonna solve a problem? And they come together around that and they do that. That's what they go to school, they go to Stanford to do. And so we gotta change the mindset of what stu- get students to think about it, Darren. Just not go and collect a bunch of classes, get a cert, a degree that gets supposedly lead to a job. We wanna challenge them a little bit differently about that. Still get your degree, but challenge you how you do that. I don't know. You and I probably have to sit down and think about it, but.
Well, obviously, I think a lot of that might be influenced by ideal which you referenced because they're proximity to Stanford and having spent a couple of years working with them on one, I did once. The thing that struck me is, first of all, everything they do is in teams. Secondly, they, they're all about opposite space, learning and discovering. Whatever you think you're doing, they're trying to discover something that's in the opposite direction where you think you're supposed to be.
Yep.
And then some sort of tangential skill set brought to the table.
Yep.
That has, on, on third was not gonna do with the challenge in front of people.
Yep.
And that may be in part what you described on Stanford.
Yeah.
That description is pretty much underneath is different to what their narrative is.
Yep, it is. It is. And we're gonna have to change some. I think, I tell you what, I look at my school and it's committed to research. It's gonna change so slow. But I think the power of the schools that are in this room is they can't. You're, you're not community colleges. Community colleges are supposed to adapt to the specific skill set needs in a community. They need to stay there. We don't have enough of those people as it is. But the people that we wanna come to our school, we wanna create them into learners. We wanna do, we wanna take the Stanford model and twist it. Ohio State's not gonna change very easy. It's, it's a research institution. It's, it's just not gonna change. Yes, we were talking about the multiple lanes that students can go down, but they're gonna be primarily I's. Come out I's, doesn't mean they can't be Ts. But you have a chance to build Ts, but then you're gonna, you're gonna change your swim lanes. And I'll give you an example. So we did a seminar on space, technology, learning and the T. And we introduced the T concept, this a couple of years ago, and we had this seminar. And so we had, it was made up of faculty and administrators and students. So they went through a number, and it was, it was led not by anybody on campus, but it was led by the Smith Group, which is a big architectural design firm. Very good at this. And at one of the last exercises was, now that you've done on this, faculty got over here and designed learning. And then the students designed learning. So the faculty got up and made their present and it was all linear. Students come up and it looked like this roadmap all over the place because they start here, oh, we can go over here and we go over here, just like your thing. And they, they learn that way. But we package it this way. And somebody's gonna break that. I think you had a question back here.
Yeah, so many of us come from smaller liberal arts colleges and on a very small scale, who's staffing and the career services opposite. So that being said, I actually met with Gary Bolz from last week our office, with people speaking about future work. And we asked him, and it was really aligned, I feel like, with the three things that you came up with at the end, with the coaching campus, being integrated, teaching students to tell their stories. If we could do only one thing, so we're always prioritizing what we're gonna be doing. So if we could only prioritize one thing in our office to do with our students, what you would make that show me?
Storytelling. I really believe it's storytelling. So if you need to work on that, you call Rich Feller, Colorado State University. Mr. Narrative Assessment Storyteller. And he'll come to campus and coach. It's students telling the student story. That's what you need to be the coach of. Helping them understand. And it means that you can't do it the three weeks before they graduate. It means that you have your narrative work going on all the time. So I believe that. That's my bias. Whether that will reign, become the priority at your school, I have no idea. But that's my bias. Others, I think there was somebody over here.
Could you talk about that Apple challenge you had on your slide?
Okay, so the Apple challenge is Apple's built a challenge lab at MSU. It's got out there. I have not yet, I was told that it's up now and so they got students in it. And I just met before going, I'm on it on the road. So I'm gonna go, but what they did is Apple actually has challenges that they say, and they come in and they form teams and they work on these challenges. Now, as I said, most of these kids are coming out of what we call the liberal arts. So they're not computer science folks. So to do the challenge, they get coached on coding. They get coached on, on, if the, you know, other things that they might not have on their team. So they're learning how to code. They're learning how to begin to design, design and attack the problem from different disciplinary perspectives. So they have to negotiate that. And then they found out, well, it's gonna take longer in the semester to do it. And we, Apple's moved it to a year kind of experience on this test. And so we'll see what happens. But they're doing it on their own. They're doing it with, I said, no credit or any, it's just being part of this Apple, this challenge. And I think this first one, as I understand, is some kind of app for Apple, which was, wasn't surprised me. But again, you got a whole room full of kids, eighty, that are in this. Most of them have never coded before, so they have to sit there and learn. It's the same way as Olin Engineering School, which is up in Massachusetts. It begins with a problem. So all the kids come in and they're given the engineering problem that they have to work on for the four years of their. And as they go, they learn what they need to do to make the steps. So you don't have to come in. So you don't have to come in, my school, you have to come in and take your, all your calc, your physics and everything before. They start and when they learn, they, when they learn the math when they need it, they learn the stuff when they need it, and by the end they have the content, but it's all based around a problem, so they don't go down on some faculty's favorite three courses because that's what they want to teach, that may or may not, it's very different. So that's, it's kind of like that idea, bring them together, give them a problem to solve and let them figure out what they have to learn as they move through and bring, and give them the resources to do that. Does that make sense? You can do the same thing here. Anything else? Yep?
First thing, for being here.
Yeah.
Second, I want to go back to storytelling because I want to make sure I connected the dot here.
Yep.
I participated in a women's organization here and I run their webinar series program.
Yep.
And last month I just had a speaker in on storytelling.
Yes.
But from a corporate perspective.
Yes.
So who I am, what I do, and who I do it for. So would it be the same for my students?
You're going to follow the same pretty much framework, that's who I am, what can I do, and then instead of saying, you know, organizationally, what am I going to do for you, it's what I want to do with that. And then, but the next thing is if they come and interview with you, they can then go the next step and say, this is what I can offer you based on what I know you can do. So we have to teach them how to do that, but, but the storytelling principle is pretty much the same.
Okay, good.
Yes, sir?
I was looking at U S News and Report, for example, breaking the university, and I don't remember all the categories, but I checked those out, I've had brain cells available.
Yep, don't check them out, don't use them. They have nothing to do with learning, their metrics have nothing to do with learning.
Well, those are the metrics that are reused.
Yeah, but they're the wrong ones.
And so is there any metric on there regarding percentage of graduates who get a job right out of the public?
I think that's, I do think that's part of the, they should, most of those schools have to report that now, so that's part of it. But they don't talk about learning balance, they don't talk about the options. It was just a big article, I have it, but it's in my queue of things to read about how misleading these U S News and Report can be, even though they've changed some of their statistics. I will get back and I'll pick on your president because she was talking about her daughter going to school, and the schools, it's all about fit, it's all about finding your place and a place you can swim, and using news point doesn't tell you anything about that. I mean, you might have to go to visit schools and things and find things, yes, you can, and I'll go back, just to make my point, Intel decides not to recruit on college campuses anymore. It's teamed up with Handshake and PiMetrix, which is the gaming thing on skill sets, and there's others, and a uniform platform. Any student that wanted to apply to Intel or was interested in Intel could come on and instead of just sending resumes, they played the games. And what happened was they had so, let's say, 1,500 young people interested in Intel, and they found 300 that met their qualifications off these assessments, and guess what? None of them were at the schools that they recruited at. I mean, they opened it up to anybody. We found out that these kids were everywhere. They made a very stupid statement, well, I won't say it's stupid, the executive made a statement and says, "We found kids that were better than the average kids at Harvard." Well, that's not the kind of comparisons you want to make, folks, but the thing is, there's a lot of really good places to go to school that fit your, my kids or my grandkids that aren't necessarily always showing up. I wouldn't trade my oldest daughter's education at St. John, St. Benedict in Minnesota, but it doesn't make the top 25 liberal arts schools. But boy, is it a good school for, and it was perfect for her. But we had to spend some time because her choices were DePaul and one in Ohio that's just right up here the road, on 71, I think. Huh? No, it's, it's, Worcester, yeah. No, it was, I, we swam at Ohio Wesleyan, we swam down, Swimmeets at Ohio Wesleyan, but, yeah, but it was Worcester. Very serious about Worcester, but boy, she just fit, you knew you fit. That's what's really important, take the time. If you go off the list, sometimes you, okay, I got into that top school, but then you get there and you don't fit. And if you fit, you learn a whole lot better. Now, it's not to dismiss the whole thing, a lot of people have to use that as reference, but there are some really good schools out there. There's some really good schools right here in, in Ohio that would not necessarily make the top of those lists, but I would send my kids to, before they go, send us some of those that go to the top of the list. Just be careful how you use them because they don't often measure what you really, really, really need your kids to be doing. I just cautious about that.